Clerk, please call the role.
Here.
Kelly. Commesso. Mr. Conti.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. We're going to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and which will be led by Councilmember Flynn, and then followed by a moment of silence. And in connection with resolution that is being offered tonight, let's keep in mind, continue to keep in mind, um, the town of Charlottesville, Virginia. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Good evening. Um, we're now, we'll move into our public comment period where members of the public have the opportunity to speak on a subject of their choice for up to five minutes. I believe we have, what, we, we have about seven members of the public that have signed up to speak. Um, so we're going to ask the clerk to please call the first speaker.
Taisha Gafar.
Yes, here.
Please come forward, Ms. Taisha.
Hello, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, don't apologize. We're just happy that, I, I feel like I should have a bell go off saying first timer or something.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Taisha Gafar Ajayi, and, uh, I'm just going to tell you a little bit of my background. My background is nursing, real estate, aesthetics, and I'm also the treasurer for AMS, which stands up for American Muslim Society. Um, in the past, we have been able to record some of our shows to let the community know who we are, what it is to be Muslim, because there's a lot of misconceptions throughout the world of what being a Muslim is. And we feel that is our duty, as well as our spiritual duty, to let the community know what we stand for, and that we stand for justice, no matter who's asking for justice. Um, we are having trouble of, uh, recording our shows through the, um, Albany Public Access, and we understand that is some distinction going on amongst the people who's in charge of that sector here. And all I'm saying is that I wish that, um, something could be done proactively about the issue, because this has been at a standstill, and I don't think it's fair. You know, this is something that is a lot of us, allotted to us through the city to come to express ourselves, and that's what we tend to do. And I really feel that we shouldn't have, uh, any, because it seems like there's redlining going on. And that's just my personal opinion on what I have observed thus far within the past few months. And so, all I'm asking, all those who have, um, saying the matter, is that they proactively, uh, come to a resolution. I want us to come to a resolution, not just talking about it, because from what I'm hearing in the past, there's been, um, people involved who's been talking about this issue, and it's, and it just, the ball just drops. So, I, I would love to see change, change in a positive direction, and that way that, uh, the citizens of Albany, New York, uh, could take advantage of this, uh, program that we have here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for having me.
Uh, Ms. Taisha, I just want you to know that there have been ongoing conversations between councilmembers and the committee, um, and the Public Access, um, PEG Access Committee. So, there, uh, there is some action in terms of trying to deal with the situation. I believe I'm correct in saying that. Um, so we are trying to address it, and I do believe that, um, you would get, we would stand in agreement that we're missing out on a grand opportunity at this time by not having access.
Absolutely.
So, uh, we are working, um, I think, to resolve the issue, because your program, I know, started recently, this year.
Yes, correct.
Amin Kadir.
Yes, indeed.
Yes. So, I think that, um, we, hopefully, we will have a resolution soon.
God willing.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. And congratulations for being a first timer.
Thank you.
And we hope we'll hear from you again.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Kimberly Crapp.
You can go either way, either way you want.
Yeah, can I go last, please?
Last.
The last speaker, because what I'm going to say is going to make more sense after everyone speaks.
Okay, okay. Next speaker, call the next one, doesn't matter.
Dennis Karius.
Thank you. My name's Dennis Karius, and I am also here to speak for Public Access Education and Government TV. When we started, I did, I pledged allegiance to the flag for liberty and justice for all of us, but liberty includes freedom of speech, freedom of the press. We need the best PEG Oversight Board, you know, to keep things going. Channel sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen should not go off the air. If this was channel six, ten, or thirteen, then that would never happen. But for the studio to go down this long, it's really sad. So, maybe instead of one coordinator working that many hours per week, um, I won't say full-time, maybe we need two coordinators at half the time, half of each, and not starting at the same time, but one starting six months later, so that if someone leaves for any reason, either they quit or they're fired, that other one is going to be doing this for six more months. And then, you've got six months to replace that person who, who left, instead of what we just went through, somebody months ago leaving, and we're still, I'll put it in quotes, looking for somebody to replace him. So, all I'm asking is if we can just have two coordinators at half that time, and that they don't start at the same time, they start six months apart from each other, so that if somebody leaves, we still have six months when the studio can stay open. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker?
Ryan Adams.
Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ryan Adams. Um, you know, it's always just been a concern, how come? I don't see much public access in, um, the capital region. Uh, me technically, I'm a, um, I own my own business. I'm a videographer slash photographer, and, um, basically, I would like to see more like, you know, other people like me, or other people in my profession, to actually like have experience, actually like when it comes to the channels, um, when it comes to the channel. I'm also like do all the technical stuff. That's, that's basically my thing. Um, yeah, I'm just starting to get new into the whole thing, um, the whole public access thing right about now. I'm just here to just basically support it in any way I can, um, whether it be my talents, or just be a voice. And, um, that's basically why I'm here, just for support. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for making yourself available, um, to provide, as a resource for the public access channel. Next speaker, please.
Alana Klein.
Good evening, Madam President, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. This is the fourth meeting I've attended and the third one at which I've spoken. Previously, I've had my comments prepared days or even weeks ahead of time. However, the events of these past few weeks have been so disturbing that I only found words to put pen to paper, so to speak, mere hours ago. The first issue I want to address is the events in Charlottesville, Virginia last weekend. Before I do so, I'd like to take a few seconds of silence to remember the life, life of Heather Hare. Ms. Hare was a peaceful counterprotester who lost her life when she was run down by a car driven by a white nationalist. This census act of violence also injured nineteen other people. Our highest elected official at first refused to condemn neo-Nazis, the KKK, and white supremacists by name. Even after doing so, he eventually backtracked and said that there were, quote, "many fine people" on, quote, "both sides." I saw a story about this one Unite the Rally participant who lives in Honey Eye Falls area near Rochester. He described himself as a moderate Republican who was protesting the removal of a Confederate monument because it's a part of our nation's history. To make myself perfectly clear, there are zero fine people in these groups. Neo-Nazis, the KKK, and white supremacists are hateful, fidgety, divisive racists. There was nothing moderate about this rally. There's nothing moderate about a swastika. There's nothing moderate about a Confederate flag. There's nothing moderate about a Nazi salute. There's nothing moderate about chanting blood and soil. There's nothing moderate about screaming racial, ethnic, and homophobic slurs. The other issue I'd like to address is the shooting of a man by a Troy police officer on August fifteenth. When I first heard the story, I did not need to hear any of the details to know that the officer was white, the suspect was black, and that it was all because of a nonviolent offense, offense, which was an alleged parole violation stemming from a previous jail conviction for possession. In a witness's video of the aftermath, you can hear the man who was shot twice, D'Amico McDonald, asking officers, "Why'd y'all shoot me?" And saying, "I'm about to die. They shot me in the head," while unlockers plead for answers and to get him to a hospital. He can be seen writhing in pain as he is held to the ground by an officer despite already having, having been handcuffed. At no time during the video, do any of the officers attempt to render any sort of first aid to Mr. McDonald. Thankfully, he did survive and has since been released from the hospital. At this time, there is no indication that he had any weapon of any kind. How long until this systemic police brutality happens to your constituents, to your neighbor, to your friend, to your family, to your son, or to your daughter? How long until it happens to you? Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker?
Vincent Reguso.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Reguso. I live at Thirteen Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. Uh, the reason I'm here again tonight is to talk on PEG. Remember the last time we were together and we talked on it? We talked about how there was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for audio equipment to update the chamber and next door, and that has not been done. The equipment is still poor, and it's very difficult to hear. And as, as we continue to, to get older, it becomes even more difficult to hear. You saw tonight when you first started that the sound, the feedback that we got, the equipment definitely has to be changed. I can't understand why the, they're standing, they're sitting on two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and we can't do anything with the audio equipment here. I can't go next door because I can't hear anyone. If, if the, if you council people have your backs to the audience, you're definitely not audible to me anyway. So, I, it's a big waste of time. I sometimes feel that when I come down here, that nothing's ever, ever, ever accomplished. That we come here, we beg, we cry, and you know it's all right. There's not, there was not a fib here, that the equipment is terrible, and, and as you know, that, uh, channel eighteen is off the air, it's dark. And, and, and it's, it's sort of ironic that, that my people that listen to it, one person in particular wants to know how come, and I have to explain to her how come. And, and, and the money's there. And although they, if the gentleman that was in charge of PEG said that the two hundred and twelve thousand have to last to two hundred, or twenty twenty-one, well, twenty twenty-one, I'm seventy-six years old. I'll never get to listen to some of that stuff. Well, with that being said, I wanted to just bring up one more thing. This past week on Russell Road, Tuesday of this past week, a telephone pole was hit. Three days, or Saturday of this week, another telephone pole was hit, three poles down from the one that was hit on Tuesday. You say, "Well, what's so bad about that?" Well, I would have, I would have been in a group of people that was out politicking for the, or campaigning for the person, and on, for, I should say, fortunately, someone got her, got his ear, and we were not up in that general area, which was not very far. The speeding that goes through our streets is just absolutely terrible. There never seems to be no halt. I don't know where Traffic Division is. And as you know, we don't have sidewalks up there. So, and it, the way the pole was hit Saturday, it, it came right across Russell Road, and it went up on the lawn on the right and the lawn on the left. I don't, I don't know what it, what it takes to get sidewalks. I don't know what to get safety traffic up there. But if, if we, I, how can I tell people in two weeks from now, you know, you can walk Russell Road. You can bring your kid up to, uh, Eagle Point. They, they can't walk, uh, Russell Road. They can't walk some of our streets with the speeding traffic that we have. And not only the speeding traffic, but I have no sidewalks. It's almost unbelievable. You have to be up at Eagle Point and see when school opens, the traffic congestion that's up there. And the reason the traffic congestion is up there, because people have to drive their children to school. There's no way to walk on a road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reguso. Our next speaker?
Kimberly Crapp.
This is our last speaker for the evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Crapp, and I'm here to discuss the issues that are happening with the Channel Albany Public Access and the board. Um, as we, as you probably already know, I'm a producer and host of a show called Capital Cannabis, and the director of the Capital District Cannabis Consortium. We have been here numerous times to Common Council, asking that the Common Council intervene with the issues that we're having. There's people on the Common Council that are also on the Board of Directors for Channel Albany, so they're fully aware of what's actually happening in the studio. There are eleven board, there are eleven members on the Board of Directors. They need six members to have a quorum. We have not had the same six members at a meeting, ever. That's why nothing is being done. All there is, the chairman, Mario Chigarello, is just stalling and backpedaling and not allowing anything to get accomplished at the studio. Anytime someone has a suggestion, he shoots it down and doesn't let it happen. As part of your franchise agreement with the, with, uh, Time Warner and the City of Albany, the Appendix A for Phase One, Phase One equipped four studios, the New School of Radio and Television, St. Rose, the public studio, which is at the Albany Main Public Library, and of course, here on the Common Council. As of December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, Phase Two should have been implemented. The city was, is able to request funds for equipment, not more than two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, including any necessary equipment, replacement under Phase One, additional community program, uh, development and gathering packages, a van vehicle for PEG production and programming. Uh, the City of Albany is supposed to take responsibility for the administration of at least ten seminars of at least two-hour lengths each, uh, concerning PEG video programming production offered by the City of Albany in conjunction with St. Rose and the New School of Radio and Television each year, and available without charge to at least fifteen City of Albany residents per seminar. There's supposed to be a fiber optic link from the public studio to Time Warner Spectrum's master hub. Phase Two was supposed to be met if twenty-five hours of programming per week at this point was produced. Right now, there's no programming being produced from Channel Albany. We're all aware that the studio's been closed since May. Why hasn't the eleven members of the board already written an RFP to get us a coordinator? Why is nothing being accomplished? Why is our studio dark? The City of Albany generated one point seven million dollars in public access franchise fee in order for us to have this little studio with a little bit of studio time, and nothing is being done. I was told it's not politically correct to name people on the Common Council, or who we've already approached about these issues, but I can guarantee at the next meeting, I will be putting names to all of them, so the public is aware of the lack of effort, not only by the Public Access Board of Directors, but by the Common Council of what's happening. Because there is an ordinance, a law, that directs public access, which has not been met from day one. Okay? Now, Part Thirty-eight of the PEG AOB ordinance means that this is for the purpose of overseeing the cable television public access facility, studio in the City of Albany, and general implementation of public access. Subsection forty-two dash three seventy-five, the purpose and scope and authority. The purpose of this, of this, uh, this legislation is to create an Oversight Board that shall, A, assist in the development of PEG in the city, including by promoting the use of public studio to the citizens and groups throughout the city and the community; B, oversee the cable TV PEG facility studio and assist the PEG coordinator, who shall be responsible for day-to-day coordination of PEG studio facility; C, to oversee the memorandum of understanding between the city and relevant entities to ensure the implementation of PEG access; D, to make recommendations on the success of the programs of Phase One, per PEG funding based upon the findings, and make recommendations for expenditures of Phase Two funding, which is not being done. And let's not forget that Section Forty-two dash three seventy-eight, the public outreach section, states that the PEG shall prepare an informational pamphlet on and regularly publicize the mission and purpose of PEG AOB. There's also specific requirements for the board members to have. For the board members to be on the board, you must possess knowledge and interest in promoting public access in the City of Albany. There's only two members, one from the Common Council, one from the mayor, that are only allowed to live outside of the City of Albany, and they must have, uh, and it says, "Only if the set appointee provides the unique and desired expertise and commitment to the cause of PEG TV in Albany." So, as we can see, the Public Access Board is not fulfilling their fiduciary responsibilities. I demand, as a taxpayer and cable subscriber, that the board be disbanded and new members be in place. We need a new RFP for members of the PEG board that is going to get things done. On the interview, at the next meeting, if nothing's done, I'm going to name the board members. That I already addressed this with on the interview, for the last board member. I interviewed for the last board member. Everything I said here, I said at that board meeting, and there were two Common Council members there who still haven't done anything about anything that we say. And we're getting tired of it. You know, it, it's vote-in time. It's vote-in time. That's all we got to say, and we are community outreach. Would you like, how much minutes do I have? Because I'd like...
Actually completed your time.
Okay, because I just wanted to say, I would suggest, if, or if you'll allow me, forty seconds.
You've al, you've already extended. I can't do that. I didn't do it for the others.
All right. Well, you definitely, I have these notes if you want them, because I remember last time you wanted them in writing.
We can do that. You can provide that.
So, I have everything here, and also, I suggest that...
And we'll give just, give copies, and we'll make, we'll make copies so that councilmembers have them.
Call the studio and listen to the message at the studio where Mario says, "We will not be listening to the messages."
Thank you very much for your comments. That was our final speaker for our public comment period. Um, you have to sign up before the meeting started in order to speak. Um, I will address, I know you have a concern, and I will address it, um, after we conduct our business, um, as on the agenda. So, I will address the issue that you wanted to bring up, because I do think it's a, a general information, um, topic. So, at this time, we're going to complete our public comment period, and then now we will move into the approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Mr. Conti. Madam President, I move the approval of the minutes to the August seventh meeting. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Conti. Madam President, the local laws on tonight's agenda are held. Thank you. We will now move to consideration, I'm sorry, are there any reports of standing committees? Mr. Herring.
Yes, Madam President, the planning, there's an, as of two pending meetings, the Planning Committee, uh, one, the Planning Committee will be, uh, meeting on August thirtieth after caucus to consider the appointments of Serena Joyce White and Richard Berkeley to the BZA.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting next Monday, the twenty-eighth of August, to discuss an ordinance that will be introduced tonight, Ordinance Number Thirty-seven eighty-two seventeen, uh, which is an ordinance amending Part One of Chapter Forty-two of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new Article Eight, Identification of Law Enforcement Officers. Thank you.
Is that at five thirty? Is that just, is that what you said?
Yes, it is at five thirty.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you very much. Um, ad hoc committees, nothing? Okay, thank you. We'll now move to ordinances introduced. Mr. Clears?
Thank you, Madam President. I, uh, recognize for introduction, Ordinance Thirty-seven eighty-two seventeen.
Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance amending Part One, whoops, excuse me, of Chapter Forty-two of the City, of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new Article Eight, Identification of Law Enforcement Officers.
Mr. Conti? Hey, thanks, Madam President. That is referred to the Public Safety Committee, and the remaining ordinances on the agenda are held with the exception of Agenda Item Number Eight by Ms. Fahy, and Agenda Item Number Fifteen by Mr. O'Brien. Thank you. Um, Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Madam President. I notice, uh, Ordinance Number Thirty-five eighty-one seventeen, and ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant of an adhesment in favor of Albany Medical Center and City of Albany over a portion of the city right-of-way of Twenty-two Muscatlin Avenue in the City of Albany.
Is there any discussion? If not, if it doesn't require roll call, I'm going to ask for a voice, voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Two opposed. Thank you very much. The ordinance does pass. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien. Madam President.
I never even heard the inherently corrupt, and everybody else in the house is just so terrible. This is a public meeting. You can't even hear you. I mean, don't you think it's a little insulting? I'm sorry.
Madam President, I notice Ordinance Number Thirty-six eighty-one seventeen, and I ask for a vote thereon.
Clerk, please read the title. Again, for purpose of, uh, this ordinance, I'm going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. That's thirteen one. And the ordinance does pass. Um, Mr. Conti? Madam President, now I ask...
Madam President, I now ask majority consent to add Resolution 50.82.17R to tonight's agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, with that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Pleers?
Thank you, Madam President. I recognize Resolution 508217R and request its introduction and passage.
Introduction is going to committee, right? Isn't this going to committee?
No.
I'm sorry. I have, that's right, I'm sorry. Please read the title.
Resolution of the Common Council, meaning returns attack Charlotte's County, 2017, U.I., racism, nature, and rights.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Pleers?
Thank you, Madam President. So, the purpose of this legislation is pretty self-explanatory, but it's really about this council using its platform to take a stand against hate in any form, racism and bigotry in our country, which is systemic. It's also about showing compassion for Heather Hill, who lost, Haye, who lost her life as a result of a white racist who drove a car into a crowd and also injured 19 individuals, as well as the officers who lost their lives as a result of a plane crash, as they were responding to, and being supportive of officers on the ground who were asked to monitor the rally that was taking place in Charlottesville, Virginia. As local elected officials, I feel strongly that we have an obligation to stand up and call racism what it is and stand against racism and bigotry, even if at the federal level, we don't have that same level of transparency and representation. I feel that it is imperative, as a community, that we assure residents in the City of Albany that we will not tolerate hate, racism, bigotry in this country as it relates to people of African descent, our Jewish community, our LGBT community, anyone, any group who has historically been on the receiving end of discrimination and racism. And so I just want to commend my colleagues for taking a stand. Most of the colleagues in this room have agreed to co-sponsor this legislation, and I think it sends, not even I think, I am confident, it sends a strong message to our residents in the City of Albany that we represent them and will stand for them, even if our own president will not do the same. Thank you.
Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, first I want to thank Councilmember Pleers for bringing this resolution forward. I think we were all absolutely horrified by what happened in Charlottesville, and I agree that it is very important that we stand up here locally in our city and to speak out against racism and bigotry, and so we're doing here tonight. I think a lot of us are just totally perplexed, because how, how, how can we forward? We've got a lot to be thankful for in our community here. We've got strong rights ordinance in the city, and we stand on it. Not that, like, we don't have a problem here, we'll all do, but in the most part, we need to make sure that the local government stands, stands in time and against racism and bigotry. I had a neighbor, a pregnant, yesterday, who, by the way, would associate this in my ward, and one of the residents came up, she said, "Now, just look at us. Look at the people around you. It was people of all races, of all colors, many different ethnicities, and you all bring your rights together. And I think all of us know that when you get to know people who are less proud of their differences, you break through those walls. And so, I think that's part of the nature of the community, and the way we take place in our own society is such an important aspect of that. But I feel very fortunate here, and I think the challenge is how we get that message and the practices that we have in other places in our country where that does not exist, that's truly a challenge. So, thank you again, Councilmember Pleers." I can read the names.
She had to ask for some response from people today, so she could read the names of the, is everyone here want to be a co-sponsor?
Yes.
Is that true? Okay, so, everyone that's here wants to be a co-sponsor? Okay. With that being said, we'll have a voice vote still. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, none, because everyone's a co-sponsor. Thank you all so much for taking this stand, and I did ask to be included on it, so I, I also stand with you as a body to demonstrate our strong stance against hatred, racism, and bigotry in this community. But let us not be lulled into thinking that all is well in this community, that it's perfect. We may have some neighborhoods that are operating as Ms. Fahey described, but we're not perfect. And we, and I do believe that you send a strong message that we, as leaders in the community, want to certainly strive to make sure that this, nothing like this happens in our community. But we are not utopia. We have not reached that yet. But I do think that the fact that you've been able to come forward and bring such a piece of legislation and gain 100% of the approval of the folks that are in the room says a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Madam President, the remaining resolutions on the agenda are held.
Thank you. I do have some miscellaneous or unfinished business that I would like to bring up, and it does, has a, relates to a question that I received today regarding, a few weeks ago, we did receive a, during public comment period, we were given a presentation about a proposal for street renaming up in Arbor Hill on Swan Street, running from Clinton Avenue to Lark Street, where each block was going to be named, was being proposed to be renamed for different individuals that have historical significance in the Arbor Hill community. And as of, and the event was scheduled for September 9th, during which they wanted to make these presentations. But as I, Mr. Bailey is not here to address this, so the resolution to do this has not been presented, signage has not been ordered to address this issue as well. But also, I understand that there's been a request to have a community meeting, because this, believe it or not, from Clinton Avenue to Swan Street, you're crossing three wards, the third, fourth, and the fifth ward, I believe it is? Or is it the third and the fourth? Third and the fifth, I'm sorry. So two wards are included in there, and there's been a request to have a community meeting to talk about this request. So that is what, part of the delay in terms of bringing a resolution to the body to vote on. So I know that Mr. Bailey is working on that, and I just wanted to, because some of you may have heard about this, it's since we had the meeting where the residents came from Arbor Hill to talk about it, and I don't know, I mean, we have three weeks or less than that to try to get this done, but I think there needs to be that community meeting, as it was described to me this evening, and that's the message that I want to send to the individuals that came through, and two of them are here today, that made that request. But we want to make sure that, that everybody in the community is heard before this can move forward. That's the way, in my discussion, that's what needs to happen at this point. So I just wanted to clarify that. I believe that that was all I had. Ms. Colby?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a note of our Complete Streets Ordinance, because it was brought up tonight, concerns around safe, street safety, and, you know, cars driving into poles and driving too fast on our streets. And in 2013, this council did pass a Complete Streets Ordinance, and that Complete Streets Ordinance requires that when the city is looking to repave or redesign a street, that they look for things to make the street safer for everybody who uses the road, and that includes sidewalks. And so we do have too many streets in our city that do not have sidewalks, and we need to find a way to invest in sidewalks so that this can be a walkable city. So I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a Complete Streets Ordinance here in the city. It passed in 2013, and there are design guidelines which have been developed over the past few years. I don't believe they've been finalized yet, but that was a requirement of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam President, no further business. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. I'm sure everybody's ready to go. Thank you. You know what? There was something. Mr. Raguso, I do apologize if there were portions of the meeting that you were not able to hear, and I think the rest of us also share your concerns that the equipment does what it wants to do on its own, and we are, are working with the committee to diligently address the issue of technology in the chambers. Thank you.